After your October meeting, we make our proposals or we send our business cases up to the governor for their consideration or for his or her consideration. And then when that's released and timing wise, typically we're able to um show you or demonstrate to you a crosswalk with what the governor's proposed to the legislature with what you have put in um to the governor. Uh again, it's mandated by law. Then of course, we we move together, we move in tandem, we move together with um the governor's office, the legislature. Uh and then more importantly, and and uh I'll get to this in a minute with our LEAs, um and specifically um the Joint Legislative Committee, and I'll talk more about that here too. But January is when the legislative session starts. And it's and we get revenue estimates, estimates, and I want to emphasize that in my uh word uh because it's an estimate, right? Typically around when when that starts. We do, we do get estimates in the fall. We we really, you know, have some idea about how things are coming in, but you know, we we really kind of start to focus on those estimates in January. The Public Education Appropriations Committee meetings start, uh they run through January and February so that they can um our PEA or legislators that are part of that committee can make their public education recommendations to what's called the Executive Appropriations Committee, maybe in January and February. And it's really right around the first or second week in February that we know what how much revenue is available to public education uh by way or through the legislature. And by doing the process that we're go, you know, that I'm uh that we're studying today, when we get to that point on what the revenue availability is and based on your prioritization and your your maximum focus on the individual student, your strategic plan and portrait of a graduate, it's there that the decisions are made in the PEA process, the Public Education Appropriations Process, to put forward what your recommendations are in conjunction with the governor's input, of course, because we're all partners in this and we're all very interested in the well-being of the students and getting resources to them and our educators. It's when that revenue availability comes in that you see what Public Education Appropriations Committee recommends to Executive Appropriations Committee. And what I'm going to demonstrate, Dale Frost and I will demonstrate to you later in this study session, um just how well this process has gone in the sense of um at the outcome or at the end of of legislative sessions. We've done quite well, um and we're very grateful to to our elected officials in the legislature for increases in funding to public education uh for both um our individual students and educators. Uh next slide, please. Okay. Okay, so now I want to spend some time on the law, on the Budgetary Procedures Act, because really this is the driver of this process. It's uh under titled sixty-three J, uh titled budgeting. And it's it's the governor's proposed budget to the legislature and, you know, the Budgetary Procedures Act is quite long, multiple pages. Uh so I just have taken a portion out that's um relevant to today's study session. And really, again, what drives this process and and the requirement that you as a board provide um your proposals first and foremost after your October meeting, so that then, of course, you know, the governor can put the whole budget proposal or package together to the legislature thirty days before it starts is driven by this law, by the Budgetary Procedures Act. So if you refer to section two oh one and specifically paragraph three A, um item one, the governor shall require, including all public education, you know, and I've highlighted this, and I apologize, they were supposed to just kind of come up, you know, as I talked through this and we clicked on this, but I forgot about the Zoom and driving these things, but um so hopefully the highlights don't distract you. But the the governor has the authority to require just what I described, to require that you as the board provide him or her your proposals for the next legislative session or for your budget, for beyond just what the base budget is. What additional new money, uh what increase percentage do you want to the WPU uh that again supports your strategic plan and your portrait of a graduate and our portrait of a graduate? So applying for state money, and that's where it comes into the changes in appropriation. So any change in appropriation is um ne- necessary for us to put forward to the governor that, hey, we want an increase to a particular program. Or and you can even um advise uh or as part of your proposal, ask for reductions of um appropriations and say, you know, we want to reduce this appropriation and increase this appropriation with that reduction. That can all take place. And also, he may require or she may require that persons or entities subject to this subsection provide particular, may may include a requirement for program productivity and performance measures. So that's why you also hear um or are part of are, you know, basically staff, uh you've seen like Dr. Curry, um W Superintendent Stallings, Dr. Norman, you know, providing the performance measures on particular programs. He uh he can also or she can also require particular um tools or or resources from any, not just us, but any of the agencies from higher ed. And one of those is a business case, and I'll I'll drill down on that as well. And then uh paragraph three A three, uh he can require, so typically when he releases or she releases the budget proposals to the legislature, they'll call a meeting uh with what, or I'm sorry, with board leadership, uh superintendent, myself, or our positions, uh W Superintendent Stallings and W Superintendent Norman, Chief of Staff Stanley, to go over the proposals. Um and even before that proposal, they can also, we do attend some meetings depending on what the situation is, and especially with COVID, uh you know, the impacts of COVID last year and obviously continuing this year, we do meet quite frequently with um the governor's office or well um Governor Cox's staff. So I just want to, you know, kind of pause here and just make sure that, you know, there's a reason behind why we provide business cases and and why we follow the process that we do. Um initially, of course, it's that requirement for us to submit a proposal to the governor's office, again, after your October meeting. Uh but then it also formulates, budget formulation, uh a a good and uh very clear um process and and what we as the board feel is required to ensure that resources and in the sense of money uh gets to our students and our educators. Next slide, please. So let's talk about the business cases. Okay, and and as I pointed out, the business cases are required by the governor's office in accordance with that three A number two of the Budgetary Procedures Act. I mean, he may require it, she may require it, and they do, and that's why we do the business cases. And these business cases are methods or tools that we use to basically do the initial application for state money or appropriations, um either for increases to existing program allocations or appropriations, or to even create new programs. And that's really why or the design between behind um why we spend so much time and focus so intently on uh or staff do on creating business cases for your review as part of the overall decision-making process that ultimately leads to what you determine should go forward uh in the interest of your strategic plan and the portrait of graduate. Those business cases are not required by the legislature. That question's come up to me a lot in the past, you know? Do we send these business cases on to the legislature? No, we don't. We have in the past, though, provided them on a case-by-case basis um to uh individual or or sometimes, you know, to the whole Public Education Appropriations Committee as backups. So what I'll I'll delve into here in a minute, which is called a quad chart, right? Typically, when we get into the legislative session, what Public Education Appropriations wants is a summary of our requests, and we capture that by way of a quad chart. Um that I'll, again, I'll I'll develop that a little bit further with you here, and then, of course, as part of the process and when we get into the legislative session. We always, we always are are very considerate, I feel, and and we include or inclusive of um our our LEAs, um charter schools uh included. One particular um entity is, of course, is the Joint Legislative Committee that's made up of USSA, uh Utah's superintendents, Utah State Superintendents Association, and USBA uh makes up the JLC. And we're always making sure that you as a board know what their priorities are as well. Um we always need to be considerate. We need to listen to and um always, you know, consider uh what the field is asking for. Um so if Angie, can you turn it over to me because I want to show them it's not in here, but I want to show them what the JLC is proposing, so if I could just do that, and it will be in your backups. It'll be in the backups to the um in in your October meeting here, so. So in their August twenty-first meeting, which I missed, obviously, because I was gone, but um we have this available to us now, and again, it'll be in your um backups. And I just, you know, wanted to pause here and just make sure that um you're, I'm demonstrating to you, are resolved to ensure that we're listening and considering our those that that are on the front lines, if you will, or in the trenches. I know those are military terms, but um just can't say enough of of how highly I respect all of them and what they do. And we always want to make sure that that we include um what they're looking at and what they think is is best and in the interest of the student, so. Where they've broken this out is in the left-hand column is is basically their objectives, I think. Um objectives might not be the right term. But you can see here what they're they're asking for. And again, my understanding was last month that Mr. Frost or Dale went through um in detail Amendment G and and HB three fifty-seven. And, you know, since it's recent uh and the impacts it has, so they're asking for a five percent WPU increase or, you know, wanting a five percent WPU increase in addition to those provisions. They want to expand programs to recruit, support, and retain teachers. And they want to support the continued development of educator career pathways. They want to support students. We all want to support students. So they want to invest in early childhood learning. They want to increase social, emotional, and mental health support, provide additional funding for students with disabilities. And they want to support extended learning opportunities. Um for the schools, uh five million per year to attain that um eighty-five percent state support for to-and-from transportation costs. Basically, you might have heard the term pupil transportation. Uh five hundred thousand dollars per year, and when they say per year, excuse me, they mean ongoing. They mean ongoing funds or funding levels, right, to support um pupil transportation and NASS. Two hundred and fifty million dollars in one-time fund, so not ongoing funds, to support increased capital costs. And they provide fifty million in funding to reduce the cost of curriculum fees. Policy-centric, um this is their positions and what they support. I won't read each one of those to you. You can take a look at those. And uh what they oppose. So we're all, again, we're considerate always of ensuring that we maximize this as a combined effort, if you will, not just from your staff within the USBE, but from uh getting input uh from the field as well. So I'm going to stop sharing this. Again, this is, it'll be available to you in your backups in August, and we'll continue to work with them on that. Uh, you know, and uh also too, in the October meetings, we usually ask for the USSA, which is um Dr. Cunningham. Now, it used to be um uh Superintendent Shoemaker to come forward and address these two. So if I missed something or or misrepresented something here, they'll have an opportunity to correct me or expand on this and uh answer your questions as well. So I'm going to stop my screen uh or stop the sharing so we can go back to the slides. Well, uh Angie, I think I let it go, so can you bring them back up? Oh, yeah. Oh, Jeff, okay. Sorry, Jeff. Okay, so I'd like to get back on uh to the business cases, because you may ask, well, okay, so we've seen what JLC is proposing. Do they need to do a business case? In the past, we've asked them for that. We've asked them to, because, as you know, they they coordinate and and they meet with the governor's office as well. Um former board member Cummins is is uh, you know, the governor's, uh I'm not sure what her title is, but public education um advisor. Um and so, you know, they meet quite regularly. I'm sure that the governor's office has their, just as I shared with you, has their priorities in mind as well. Um and then, you know, set uh progressing along this slide for the um fifth bullet there. You know, I I just brought back again this this, you know, as we as we go and we move together through this process so well, that we always are staying focused on your strategic plan and your portrait of a graduate. Our funding request with the respective business case, again, is submitted to the governor's office following your October or following our October meeting. They do ask us for priorities, and I know this has been, um and we can discuss this a little more at the end of the presentation with any questions you might have. Should we prioritize? How should we prioritize? My recommendation to you, and it's just a recommendation, as a as one of your primary staff officers, I really feel strongly that you should, that you should prioritize. How many you prioritize and and all that, I leave up to you. Um I think that's just a really great and integral part of the process is for you as a board to come together, and you have so well. You did last year, I know all of you, uh or we had quite a few new board members on in January. The process that, and I I get that you came into the process right before the legislative session, so to speak, but you were an integral part of the process and the success that we had um with what ended up being our state fiscal year twenty-two budget, and I'll show you the the scorecard on that here in a few minutes. So when the governor makes the budget proposal to the legislature in accordance with that law, again, we crosswalk that. And then another question that I get all the time is, well, okay, so when you show us the crosswalk, Scott, or Mr. Frost, or Dale shows us the crosswalk, and it shows that the governor didn't push forward one of our business cases or one of our proposals, or three of them or four of them, is that it? Is it over? The answer is no. Um we still have the ability to, um and the governor's office is well aware of this, they support the process of continuing our efforts to get your priorities funded, to get your business cases and and what you've um authorized the staff to move forward with uh with the legislature. Um what I've seen in my experience is typically uh the, maybe the first, second meeting of Public Education Appropriations. The chairs will call forward us, they'll call forward the governor's office uh and and the JLC, and uh we'll do a review. We'll review with them um what, you know, the governor's proposal, our proposal, and JLC's proposal, so that they in turn can um take those and um you know, develop them, develop them over the course of the Public Education Appropriations meeting, culminating in their recommendations to Executive Appropriations Committee. So, next slide. So let's talk about the legislative session a little bit more. Um again, there's that tracker, and we keep that updated, we uh we almost in real time. Uh Dale uh is just phenomenal at at ensuring accuracy and reliability and exactly where we're at through this process on a month-to-month basis, on a board meeting and board meeting basis. Uh budget proposals are are again scheduled or reviewed as part of the Public Education Appropriations Committee. We present what's called quad charts and somewhat summarize our requests to them. Uh because again, you know, business cases, as you've seen, can be quite lengthy, they can be quite detailed. It's the business cases, though, that we do use to summarize the quad charts or or to uh build the quad charts, if you will. And I'll be showing you an example of a quad chart in the October meeting um so that that we're focused in on that, that the the quad chart supports a business case that, you know, may go forward, subject to your authorization. But that's essentially been a pretty good tool. We introduced quad charts to the legislature back when I first started or back, quad charts to Public Education Appropriations back when I first started with USB. And um they seem to do pretty well in communicating or providing the information or data that the um Public Education Appropriations Committee members need. Um we provide our priorities of funding, uh and again, as I articulated, it can be and sometimes are different than what was prioritized by the governor or what was put in his or her proposal. The amount of funding or revenue available to public education, again, is finalized typically in that February timeframe. And then they make their recommendations to the Executive Appropriations Committee on what priorities to fund. Um they consider our proposal, the governor's proposal, and of course, the JLC. So next slide, please. So why, what's the so what of all this? What's the so what of all of your time and effort and attention to this process? The details behind it, i.e. having to spend time uh reviewing the business cases? Well, it's not the only reason why we've had great success over the years. There's so many other factors. Uh the trust that's uh out there uh in our ability to ensure that funding does get to the end of the road, so to speak. Uh trust in our ability to control those funds and manage them appropriately. Um the partnerships that we have with our districts and our charter schools, with um the charter school board, with all of the partners and um stakeholders in in public education and public education funding. So just in from from a, as a result of this process and your efforts, there was forty, four hundred and eighty-one and a half million dollars of new money for fiscal year twenty-two. So in summary, the USB budget formulation process gets results year after year. You make a difference, your process and your prioritization and your efforts behind this are making and getting resources to the individual students and our educators. Next slide, please. So let's talk, let's drill down a little bit more um on all all of the success that's behind the these, this process that I've hopefully um provided to you today for better understanding uh in, you know, application of it. Uh Chair, if I may, can I turn it over to Mr. Frost to walk you through um all of the great successes we've had in the past um related to this process? I'll turn it over to Mr. Frost.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Jones. Um let me make sure, can you all hear me? Yep. Oh, no, I'm on the wrong.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, um, there we go. Um, there we go. I was on the wrong webcam, excuse me. Um, yeah, so Deputy Superintendent Jones asked me to kind of go back and and look and see, well, how many, how much funding did uh USBE in total request? How many requests, different business cases? How many were funded in in whole or in part? Um and I tried to go back before twenty-twenty, and uh just because of tight timeframes, um I've been tracking since the the twenty-twenty session at a very granular level. I wasn't able to go back further, take a little more digging on that front. Um but I did break out kind of pre-COVID and post-COVID for twenty-twenty because it 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 matters in this respect that, you know, there was a lot of work done, but then COVID changed the the revenue pitch. COVID changed the the revenue picture for the state, and and so I didn't want to give uh false information on what actually is appropriated, but give an accurate picture of what what happened. So let me start with that first table there on that first line. So this was in the twenty-twenty session before um that funding had to be retracted. Uh six hundred and thirty million was what total all requests USBE requested with all of all of its business cases. The governor recommended four hundred and seven million, and the legislature appropriated four hundred and eight million. And then when COVID struck, everything had to be retracted, and we had to figure out what revenues we had, and the legislature, even with difficult, uncertain revenues going forward, appropriated a hundred and two million in new funding. Um so going back to the, you know, what does that mean in terms of business cases? So if you look on that second um table there, uh and I broke it up between prioritize and non-prioritize. So for the twenty-twenty general session, there were eleven business cases that were prioritized, ten of which were funded in whole or in part, which was a very high percentage. Um and uh then this last session, uh the request was at seven hundred and sixty-two million, four hundred and eighty-one point five million was appropriated as Scott mentioned to you before. So if you look, uh the percentage was slightly lower, but it was still um pretty high, seventy-nine percent. The prioritized business cases were funded. Um if you look at all business cases that were put forward, we're still, you know, the the majority of them were funded at sixty percent this last year and seventy-nine pre-COVID in twenty-twenty. The only other point I'd I'd like to make is kind of show you, um because I wanted to show more historical information, but needed to compare apples to apples. So the one thing I could show you is the WPU value increase, what happened every single general session. And and then I then I calculated a three-year average um starting in twenty-sixteen. So uh if you see here, the from twenty-fourteen to twenty-sixteen, the average WPU increase is two point seven percent. Even with the lower uh WPU value increase that was available because of COVID in twenty-twenty, this last year, um we were at a three-year average of three point nine percent. Um and you can see that that average has been going up, and and I do think that as uh relationships and transparency improved between the legislature, the governor, and USBE, um as well as the the field, that that we've seen results and more has been allocated towards increasing public education funding. I I hope this can kind of give you kind of a picture of, you know, it, how how valuable is this somewhat at times heavy lift of a process, so? Happy to answer any other questions. I don't know if there's anything else, Deputy Superintendent Jones, you want me to cover on this page?
No, Dale, thank you. That that's pretty much it. So and that's that's it for this portion of the study session or or this particular slide pack package. So I'll go back to the chair and open it up for any questions on anything we've presented to this point.
I'm still looking. I'm looking for hands unless they're not showing up on my screen. I'm not seeing any at this point, so please continue.
Okay, with that, then I think we're going to segue into Deputy Deputy Superintendent Stallings' um point. Um but before we do that, I just want to make sure that um all the board members know I'm, we're available to answer any questions. And I just want to just, if if the risk of overly emphasizing this is that your October meeting is pivotal, and so we'll make sure that business cases and um, you know, like, for example, the JLC details are all provided to you um here quickly so that you have as much lead time as possible to prepare for that that uh important meeting. All your meetings are important. It's the October meeting, though, uh that you can see for the fact that we do have to put a proposal forward uh that that is really critical, that we all prepare for in the sense of uh meeting the intent of getting um your request put forward and prioritized. So um with that, um Chair will, or I think more member Moss has his hand raised.
Do I have permission? I can't remember who's running. Is that you, Scott? Can I can I throw out a question then?
Oh, it's Chair Davis.
Yes, go ahead.
Right, Chair Davis, I, so you have my phone. I'm just curious, in terms of that preparation, it might be helpful. One of the JLC recommendations on capital improvement, the two hundred and fifty million, I wonder if we might have some layout on how that fits with um S or ARP and other possible funding streams. That that's, of course, been inflexed, and it was last session about what's permissible, what's not, but that might be helpful to see where that falls into those other o- options.
Yeah, uh Chair Davis, if I may?
Yes, please.
Okay, yes, sir. So so like what what I mentioned in the in the past, we have gone to the JLC or to the leadership of the JLC and asked them to do business cases as well for what they're asked for. We feel pretty good that those provide pretty good that those provide the kind of details and information you want, so we'll do that. Uh, Mr. Frost and I will approach um Dr. Cunningham and ask her uh if if she'd be willing to put some of those business case or business cases together for their proposals, sir.
Any other hands? Did you have a follow-up? Jim?
No, thank you. Thanks.
Hey, let's go ahead.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Davis, this is Angie Stallings, Deputy Superintendent Policy. Um, I'm going to go ahead and kind of start where Deputy Superintendent Jones and um Mr. Frost ended and show you some of the outcomes we've had over the last couple of sessions with our bills and policy requests. So Jeff, if you'll go to the next slide, um, in the twenty twenty uh general session, I think this was our busiest and most active session we've ever had in my uh six years now at USBE, um, but we had forty approved requests for statutory changes that year. Um, forty of which uh did get into bills that were numbered or introduced in the session. Thirty-eight of those forty passed, um, two did not pass, one due to lack, well, two really due to just running out of time. Um, they were introduced quite late in the session, which which happens. Um, and then let's take a look at twenty twenty-one. Jeff, if you go to the next slide. Last year, we had twenty-one uh board approved requests for statutory changes, fourteen which were achieved in twelve different bills, and we had a couple combined, three which did not pass, and and four ended up not needing bills because they were tied to appropriations um and were accomplished through appropriations only. So that gives you a sense of kind of the why behind what we do each month. You'll you'll be familiar. If you'll go to the next slide. Um, Jeff, staff, what the processes that we go through as staff to bring ideas to your attention for bills or for legislation. Um, so first, staff will complete a policy request form and those requests are reviewed and approved by the board during your board meeting. And um, once they are approved, then uh we reach out to legislators, let them know that the board has given the green light to staff to work on these bills and we get um bills open. Um, if you could scroll down, Jeff, I just wanted to show you are familiar with this form. If you aren't, um, each month when we produce the list that says twenty twenty-two general session requests for statutory changes and it lists the five or six that we currently have right now. For each item that we're bringing to you, there's a copy of this form that's also uploaded. If it's just a policy request, which are the ones that have come to you and been approved by you to date, meaning there were no appropriation uh needs or fiscal impacts related to them, then you're only going to see about two pages. Um, this same form is used for all three of a policy request, a business case request, or a combined request that's going to require both policy changes and an appropriation. And so um you uh will will see in the business case backup um a an overall list of for the policy requests. It's a Word doc and um you've seen it uh each month. And I don't, I have it up on my screen, but Jeff, don't worry about it. I think board members are familiar with it, where we describe the policy changes in a one or two sentence description. Business requests are are included in kind of an Excel spreadsheet format. So oftentimes you may be looking at the overview, but there always is um generally a a a request or a form with more detail behind it if you have more questions. The exception for when we wouldn't have a form attached is if it's a board member who's requested a policy request. Um, and in that case, the board member might um either make a motion in the moment or, as we had with our very first policy request of the year, it was the um policy request that came out of the Law and Licensing Committee related to um not allowing um incentives for vaccines or disincentives for students to get vaccines. That is an an opportunity where a committee was having a discussion about a resolution or policy and they made a motion to request staff to seek legislation. So um there's kind of those three routes that generally come. Either number one, it's a staff member who's um bringing an idea forward and and then that's presented to the full board for the first time. Number two, it could be a board member who makes a motion or maybe reaches out to me before that agenda item and asks me to add it to the list. Um, or number three, it the request can come from a committee like the Law and Licensing Committee and the one item, for example, that was postponed from yesterday came from the Audit Committee. So that's generally the three ways um uh that policy requests come before you. Um, so next slide, Jeff. As a board member, of course, as an individual citizen, you always have the right or opportunity to um reach out to legislators or or give your opinions on certain pieces of legislation. But if you have a request that you would like the board to approve, become aware of and support and ask staff to work on along with you, then the way to have that happen is to make a motion during the agenda item where we're discussing the policy requests. Um, you can either do that in the moment or you're more than welcome to reach out to me and I can um type out a proposed summary of your policy idea and add it to our list. And then um we um so either of those ways, if you if you'd like to have kind of staff help or staff is reaching out to legislators, helping you coordinate meetings or open the bill file, please reach out to me. I'm happy to um help answer your questions and then also help bring that concept forward to the full board for discussion in um in a in a future board meeting or even a committee meeting if you think that's appropriate. Next slide. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that um every week during the session, we have legislative uh review meetings and they're generally uh every Thursday from about noon to one thirty. Um, and in the past, with the exception of last session, we've held those up at the Capitol in-house building room thirty. Um, and we as staff have reserved those rooms for the twenty twenty-two session, assuming that um things kind of go back to normal-ish uh and we have the ability to go back on the Hill. I I'm guessing that board leadership and the board will resume that practice of holding those uh weekly meetings every Thursday during the session up at the Capitol. Next slide. The other, uh, and I apologize, um Vice Chair Davis, if anybody would like to ask questions, I only have a couple more slides. The next one was kind of a, it's a little bit of a different topic, but if there's no questions, I'll just move on to this and then we can answer questions for all of it at the end. But um I was also asked to provide a summary or a review of the pieces of legislation that we had over the twenty twenty special sessions as well as the twenty twenty-one session related to COVID. Some of these, um, we've got waiver listed there, but some of them aren't just one-time waivers. Some of them are actually um permanent changes. But for example, three thousand five, which you see showing on the screen right now, um, if you could, yes, thanks, Jeff. Um, that one is more of a waiver and it essentially waived a couple of things due to COVID. For example, it waived the requirement for students to pass the basic civics test. Um, those who were graduating in that time there in twenty twenty, it did not waive that permanently. It was just a one-time waiver, as well as the waiver to administer assessments during spring of twenty twenty. That was also a one-time waiver. And then uh there was a waiver on, for example, school districts having to do the employee evaluations. But if you scroll down, if and Jeff, if you could make it, let's see, I was you can see some others that aren't necessarily um just uh temporary waivers. And actually, most of these are temporary waivers now that I I look at it. But you have different things like changes to immigration uh drills, um exceptions for how USBE will calculate student enrollment, for example. We have the um two nineteen, for example, that we we did discuss in our last board meeting, which decriminalized certain truancy violations through the June twenty twenty um or the twenty-one twenty-two school year and um also eliminated some enforcement related to truancy violations. Um, so here's, this list is here, and I don't know that you want me to go through every single one, but this does give you some awareness of the work that's been done over the last year and a half or so to provide flexibility or um waivers to the code due to COVID nineteen. There is one, um, well, I I would like to bring two to your attention. So first, let's look at HB two as a sample because that this one is still um in effect for this next school year. But it does allow um again, the board to use data from fiscal year twenty twenty at twenty nineteen and I believe twenty twenty for certain funding formulas. And then you can see that it waived the requirement for the board to designate low-performing schools for two years. Um, so really, the next time that you will be designating low-performing schools will be based on the assessment results from the twenty-two twenty-three school year, so fall of twenty twenty-three. The one bill at the bottom of this list, um, this bill did not pass um due to running out of time and it it is one that you may want to consider um asking staff to seek legislation. This would have, this bill HB four thirty would have allowed um school districts to offer this seminar for parents on a Saturday or virtually if there's a local or or state public health order that restricts public gatherings. It wasn't specific to COVID, but if there were ever a public order order um restricting public gatherings, that this may be a bill that you may want to um, we may want to bring back again to the twenty twenty-two session because it it would give school districts more flexibility to potentially do that on a Saturday if they felt that worked for their community. And it would also be in place that if we ever had something like COVID, maybe it's not COVID nineteen, but another health problem where um public gathering isn't allowed, that then the school districts could do that through a virtual setting. So um anyway, I'm happy to answer questions about those waivers and that list. But if you have, after you've had an opportunity to take a look at this list, if you have questions about whether any of these waivers or or those that may be expired at the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, or are set to expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, I'm happy to talk about those and maybe consider um extending that flexibility or asking for bill files to do something uh along those lines. And then um Vice Chair Davis, did you have, it looks like there might be
Board Member has a question. Thank you.
Um, did you call on me, Vice Chair?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Um Deputy Superintendent Stallings, I have a question on that HB four thirty right now. Um, when we asked for this, did we only ask for it to be on Saturday or virtually only for a public health order? Or is that all that we ask at the time?
No, we will. So currently, and I'd have to pull up the section of code, there there's some restrictions on when those uh seminars can be held. The Saturday was meant to be forever, so it could all, it could be a first Saturday from here on out. But as far as holding it virtually, the there was a qualifier on that, that it had to be, they could only do it virtually if there was a public health order in place restricting uh gathering. I don't know if that helps, but
No, it does. Thank you. Yeah, I'll bring that up later. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I am not seeing any other hands. Um, did you have more Deputy Superintendent Stallings? Because if not, um Deputy Superintendent Operations Jones wanted us to jump back to him to go an example of something. He just wanted to make sure that you had enough time to do your portion.
Great. So one thing we were going to do, but only if we had time, because it's really maybe something that you'd want us to go through once we get closer to the session. The last slide was just going to be Jeff was kind of give an overview of the website and how you can track bills. But if there's not, I would say that that might be something we could do in a future study session or board meeting because I think it might be more useful for you as legislators as we get closer to the session. So we are, I'm happy to conclude um now and turn it back to Deputy Superintendent Jones.
Okay, we just have to start our resolution at two thirty. That's a firm start time. So let's have um Deputy Superintendent Jones e- explain this sample that you want to show us and then um hopefully we'll have time to to jump back over to um Director Van Holton and if if not, we'll make sure to get that in before the session starts.
Hey, thank thank you, Chair Davis. Um, so we really wanted to, again, to um make sure that because we knew we had ninety minutes, we wanted to get through that the budget formulation process portion of this study session. Uh, make sure Deputy Superintendent Stallings had sufficient time to do her portion. Um, because we do want to leave you with this. We want to leave you with um a walkthrough of the tracker. Um, you know, you heard me um call out or emphasize, you know, that we use this tracker to ensure it's a public-facing document. So uh and it provides where where we're at real time pretty much on, you know, what your requests are, what your priorities are uh for funding for public education. And then we also want to provide you with a business case walkthrough or example so that you can ask us questions about business cases. Any of the questions in them, what we look for from the staff or from, say, JLC when they when they provide us that input. So uh Chair Davis, if we can turn it over back over to Dell, he's going to first walk you through the tracker and then he'll walk you through a an example of a business case uh so that we're um, you know, by virtue of this study session, we're all prepared to 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 do great things in your October meeting. So um Chair Davis, Mr. Frost, please.
Yes, thank you. Let's continue.
Uh, thank you Deputy Superintendent Jones. Uh Chair Davis, members, uh let me put my video on and I think I can share my screen. So let me do that.
Dell, will you also share your title for those who are joining online?
Yes, I I'm I'm the Fiscal Policy Analyst for USBE and I recently took over as the MSP Administrator. So I have two caps that I wear. So I believe my title will be MSP Administrator, but that um is still in the works. So this is the tracker. Um, and it will look, i- if you remember from the August meeting, um, we talked about uh helping us all to focus on the the nature of the request instead of the amounts. Each of these requests have an amount as part of it. Um, but and and when you drill down into the business cases, you will see those amounts. To help you kind of get a sense of the relative amounts of different sizes for these two categories, category one, which are LEA programs and contracts. Um, you'll see that we start off with what are clearly larger requests, the WPU value increase, you know, um a- adding to the WPU add-on full-day kindergarten, um and then they get smaller through that table. Um, so to kind of give you an idea of scale and scope, uh, I'm going to go over the WPU value increase. That's a fifty-two million dollar request as it stands. Um, and down here, uh, these are more around two hundred thousand dollars. And then we also have this table called USBE Internal and these are much more related to the staff and processes within USBE to help um us do the work uh at the USBE level. These are also organized by size, but they are much smaller relative to the other ones. I think they range between just under two million and down to uh uh under two hundred thousand. And so hopefully that can kind of give you an idea. There's one other thing over here. You'll see that it says strategic plan, current need and federal funds. Uh, we have not yet had the the opportunity to go through piece by piece and and the superintendency to mark which ones are most aligned with the strategic plan addressing current needs or have sections of it that can be addressed with federal funds, namely S or A or P. And so those will be filled in by the October meeting. Um, and I do want to stress, that's why I I threw draft up everywhere. It's an iterative process, but we're trying to be transparent uh in our current level of thinking um at this point. Um, and and these are subject to change uh through the month, but they our goal is to have them all finalized for October. but they, our goal is to have them all finalized for October. And I talked with Assistant Superintendent of Operations Deborah Jacobson, who conferred with Deputy Superintendent Jones. We'll be sharing very shortly a link with the most current version of all. Right now, you will see these in the backups. Those are the most current version of these business cases, but they will be updated continually throughout the month. And so you'll be able to go in there at any point and see what's the most recent version of any business case. You'll actually be able to see the previous versions if we've made updates, and you'll have the most up-to-date version of the tracker. So hopefully that can give you an idea of the tracker. Once we move past October, November, you'll see the amounts and you'll see the current 2020 funding. Otherwise, it'll look very much like this. And are there questions about the tracker that I could answer? If not, I thought we could drill down into a into a business case, because I think it'll be very helpful. Let me go to that right here. To kind of understand what are the questions with a business case? How does this work? I was just going to quickly show you, as Deputy Superintendent Stallings showed you, there are policy request questions if there are statutory changes requested in addition to a business case. So this is a business case related to the Beverly Taylor Sorensen program. And I just wanted to show this as an example that you'll see this policy request and these changes. But contrast that with this one that I wanted to go in more detail, the WPU value increase. Other than changing that value, there's not really a statutory change. And so you'll see here that there's not that section that says policy request. And so if you're going through a business case, you don't see the policy request section. It essentially means that we're asking for a change in the funding level without a statutory change. I hope that that's helpful. So I wanted to bring up the WPU value increase. Just, you know, the main thing I wanted to stress is that this is a very iterative process, and we, and these are all draft documents. And that's why I put draft behind all of them here. We wanted to have a placeholder for the WPU value increase. You saw those JLC recommendations. They came out August 21st, and that was only days before we needed to have these backups in the board backups for you all. So we didn't have a chance to confer with them on this, and we will over time. But I did want to just compare and contrast, so there's not misunderstanding on this. If you remember that, that first bullet point that Deputy Superintendent Jones said, which said a 5% increase in addition to the adjustments from House Bill 357. That's a very different amount than what we put in here. And I wanted to stress that I'm, we're not trying to make a statement what the WPU value increase should be. But I wanted to just put a placeholder in here, and the way I structured it was a 4% total. It's estimated right now, we'll know exactly, but the inflator amount is about 2.5%. And so if there was to be a 4% total increase, this request, the business case, would be anything above that. At 1.5%, that would get us to the 4.5%, and that costs roughly $50 million. The Common Data Committee process is yet to happen, so we can't tell you exactly what we think that WPU value increase would occur. So that 1.5% is very different than the 5%. I just wanted to contrast that because there is an important decision that board members need to make, and on what is the requested WPU value increase? And the 5% would be much more than this, maybe in the $160, $180 million range. And again, I'm not trying to define what is right. It's just, I wanted to walk through and show you, because I think people can easily misunderstand and think, oh, the board is asking for 4% and JLC might be asking for 5%. This is a placeholder, and we're not, but you know, those differences are very different right now. But because we haven't had the chance to really confer with them and actually update business cases. So this will likely be updated in, and I don't know exactly where that will go. That would be a decision of the board. So hopefully, that was one of the main points I wanted to make. The second, I'm going to quickly walk you through these questions in the business case form. So the first one is the requested amount. If we need a supplemental change and in addition to current budgets, that would be this first line. If we want one-time funding, either this year or next year, that's the first two lines. The ongoing funding is for next year, and that would roll into the base budget. And unless the legislature acts, that would be continually funded. The next three questions really have to do with alignment to the strategic plan or the one Utah roadmap or the board's mission of creating equitable conditions for student success. And so we've asked staff members to articulate kind of how do these align and make that case. Some of these questions came directly, Deputy Superintendent Jones mentioned that it's the governor's office that actually dictates the form for business cases. We, one of the reasons why we're a little bit behind this year is because they updated the business case and made a very significant change to that, and then took us a little while to align our form to those. So like this question five came from, directly from the governor's form. So we are asking, you know, how much have we have staff engaged with stakeholders and who? And here, we tried to be very clear that we hadn't yet directly engaged stakeholders on this. And then to summarize what the existing budget is. Question eight is, what are we, and so kind of the nature of the, kind of the meat of the business case is these next two questions. What would we solve with additional funding? And then what is the itemized budget for that? And then we would identify if they're USBE FTEs. This part of the table should only be filled out in those USBE internal documents. One of the processes that I go through is to check and vet, to make sure all of the FTE requests are aligned. So for example, if in Student Support Services, they're asking for an education specialist, then we're asking the same amount that Teaching and Learning would ask for an education specialist. And that's based on the average across the agency. I have yet to do that. And so if you drill down to some of these, there will be some amounts that don't seem to align. Why are we asking for this versus that? That's just because we haven't yet had all the chance to vet on that granular scale, but we will by the October meeting. And then questions on, is this scalable? What has been done to address this with existing resources? And then how are we going to track the value by any particular request? And then I also want to show you that we've actually asked for, for folks to create their quad chart right away at the beginning of the process, so we don't have to do it at the end of the process. And I wanted to just quickly show you here an example of the quad chart, just so you can see them. Not to really go into it in more detail, Deputy Superintendent Jones will do that. But it shows the amount, and these would align with what's in the business case. What's been funded in the past? What's the purpose of the program? What are we trying to address? How are we going to measure the success? And if that funding isn't received, what would be the impact? And so that's the general structure of each of these business cases. This is generally all that the legislators see, but we make sure that this aligns with the business case. So I hope that helps you kind of, because we threw a lot up there in terms of the business cases that you can maybe feel a little more comfortable reading through all of those and reaching out. There are staff contacts with each of the business cases, and we want you to reach out. If you have questions to staff, you can reach out to me, and we can connect you with staff. And we look forward to answering your questions before the October meeting and then continue discussion then. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you. Chair Huntsman? You're muted.
Okay, thank you. I don't know what staff will answer the question, but it seems like some of the big rocks that we pick up really first is on the WPU. With the passing of Amendment G, is there any pre-prep that we should have in place because of what happens? With that now being in the law, there's, there's an expectation that's going to be met. Are we going to know what that is here shortly? Before our governors, yeah, if you would, could you speak to that? And then I appreciate everything else that was presented in the case, but I think that's a little bit of an odd one when we do load that up. So yeah, somebody could speak to that. That's my question.
Chair, I can answer the question. So the process to know, so the two big pieces from House Bill 357, which was tied to Constitutional Amendment G. If you remember from last month, I went over that, that's funding enrollment growth and funding the inflation factor on the WPU. Those are going to be automatic increases, though they do impact the budget. And so one of the questions for the tracker is, do we include those or not? And to answer your question, Chair Huntsman, we will not know those exact amounts precisely until we're done with the CDC process, which is kind of middle of November. But we have kind of estimates right now. And so the 2.5% right now is probably in the $90 million range. It could be 85, it could be 100 million, but somewhere in there. And then we could have an estimate on, enrollment growth is a little bit harder because that is a key process, the Common Data Committee, but we could have a placeholder amount for you, so you could at least have a general idea of what we think the big rocks would be before you add anything to that. Does that kind of address the question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Booth, you had your hand up for a minute, I thought. No? Okay, I am not seeing any other hands right now. Do a quick, different kind of scan here. Okay, well, let's, let's see, we've got 15 minutes. It looks like that we can move back over to Director Ben Holton. If you feel that's, that's, that, or do you need any more time? MSP Administrator Frost?
No, that concludes my presentation. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks so much, and we'll try to keep all those titles straight as they're moving around. Director Ben Holton, are you available?
Always for the board.
Thank you.
I hope you are all doing very well today. I'm going to pull up my screen here, and hopefully what you can see right now, just some code that I pulled up. Is that what you see?
Yes.
Great. Now go to the homepage. I'll be quick, dive too deep and get into too many weeds because there will be things you will forget, and you will, because you won't be doing them until January. So I just wanted to orient you to this website and remind you, I sent you some videos in January, some quick five-minute videos of how to navigate this during the session. I'll dust those off closer to January or redo them so that we can kind of show you how things are going for January. So I'm not going to dive deep into creating a login, as you see up here, although I highly recommend all of you board members, if you want to track bills yourself, create an account, click the login and create an account like you would for any website that will help you track during the session. We'll dive into that in December or January. What I wanted to show you here, first of all, just remember, if you're ever like, what is that piece of code say? And you have the citation, the 53 whatever dash whatever, you can always go up to code, code and constitution, go through the titles, the 50 EF and G are down here, and then find it from there as you kind of go down. We've had a lot of people Google the citation, and the only reason why I'd say be careful with Googling a citation is you might pull up the 2005 version of that law that is no longer the law. So if you want the current, up-to-date, hot-off-the-press version of the code, go here, or you can just type in the site, this big search bar in the center of the website, and find it that way. I think that will be helpful just in a general sense. I always caution Googling, because there's a lot of historical documents because we're a government entity, that you'll find out there that are not the current one. So in terms of the session, the couple of things I would orient you to for now is obviously down here in the center. So we're here up at le.utah.gov. Go to the center, and you see calendar. I'm going to assume of the 15 board members, we've got some planners, people who like to put things in their calendar ahead of time. Looking at you, Laura Bell now. I would say always check the calendar. They post the view to be a weekly view. You can always make that larger if you'd like. You can view by month up here in the corner. Want to see the whole month? And you can already see there's stuff filled in here for September. We're only on the third day, but they've got a whole set of things planned. So if there's something of interest to you, the calendar is a great place to check for planning ahead, and you can also go here when you want to actually attend those meetings, because these boxes will turn green on the day of. And this little, there will be a little play button that shows up on the box, and you can hit play and stream from wherever you are on this. Plus, this little paper document icon you see on the box, that will be all the backup documentation for the committee hearing. So calendar is your friend. It helps you plan and access everything for the meetings that you would like to see, whether you're in person or not. I would definitely check that first. So one big question to ask is, well, what's happening for 2022's general session? Have they even thought about it? And if the answer of, of course they have. Resources is the tab that you're going to find everything you need in. If you want to look up a past session, you can always go over to this part of the tab and sessions, and you can hit past sessions and go to whichever session you want to look, what bills passed and didn't. I would say right here, the interim box, because that's what we're currently in right now, is a 2021 interim. You can look up the schedule, you can look up the proposed study items and whatnot, and find out what is currently going on in the interim. I'm going to go ahead and click on past session just for a minute, because you'll notice as I do, right here, the 22 general session already has a link posted, because stuff is already happening. But if you haven't checked this out yet, you are behind. There's stuff going on, there are bill files open, and you might want to check it. So this is a great place to go. I, just to remind you how I got there, I clicked on the resources tab, and I went to past sessions, because it'll pull up all the sessions they have links to. It's the easiest way to get there, and then click on 2022. And you can see right here, here are the dates for the 22 session. If you want to get that put in your calendar, it will be January 18th to March 4th. And then you can start tracking bills. And one of the easiest ways to look at what's coming up so far is to go right here in this long link, the bill request, sponsor, subject, or committee. So are you curious if there are education bills out there? If so, you can click on this. And my subject, this is usually how I check to see generally what's hanging out there right now. You can click on this, and a whole host of subjects come up in the dropdown menu. And education has a whole bunch of subparts, but if you just go to the general word, education, it'll pull up anything, and you will see, we already have bill files open. Here is a whole list of legislators and the name of their bill. Once the bill actually has language attached to it and is numbered, you would also be able to go here, and there would be a whole set of menus above bill requests that would show the numbered bill. You will not be seeing that in the near future, but as you can see, there's already about, I would guess, 20 to 25 bill files open. Some of the titles are, and the sponsors are not surprising, and something we might already know about. For example, Farm to School Program by Representative Handy. This is a bill request we were asked to work on, and you approved a couple board meetings ago. And then there is, of course, a whole host of other bills here by senators and representatives with titles, and we don't know what they are yet. We know that some are. Though if you're curious and you're wanting to kind of look at this, you can kind of get a sense of what's here. And staff will be also reaching out to a lot of these legislators to get a sense of what these bills are and how we can assist in any way. I'm going to pass it off to Angie for a minute. She's got her hand up. I'm sure she wants to add some context.
Chair Davis is okay if I move forward?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that there are also a number of bills that are open that would not appear on this list. I just wanted to add that there are also a number of bills that are open that would not appear on this list. So legislators have the opportunity to have their bill file be public. Or protected. And so if a if a legislator has opened a bill file and has not made it public. You wouldn't be able to see that here. It's my experience back from when I was a drafter, alleged research. It was about forty to fifty percent of the bill files that were public. So generally, whatever you see listed here, you can you can generally assume there's about that many. That are still private or or not yet made public to on the website. So I just wanted to add that. I didn't mean to interrupt or interrupt or take over, Jeff, but just to let board members know that there's probably at least as many bills here that are listed. That aren't. Aren't publicly available yet, but they will be at some point.
Thank you for that, Angie. I've never known what the the ratio was, and that's good to know, but. Look at this and double the recipe, if you will, and you'll get a sense of what's currently baking in the oven. Board Member Lear, actually Vice Chair Board Member Lear has her hand up.
Thank you, Board Member Lear. Uh, thanks. What's the best way? Jeff or Angie, that if we see a bill that we're interested in, and it just in the title, is it okay? I I. I don't want to ask in this public meeting, and and I even hesitate to ask about it in this public meeting, but I will. What's the best way to learn what you know about the the bill? Is it, should we just send you a text or call you or? Something like that to to see if there's something that concerns us and that we might want to start sort of. Doing some legwork on.
Yeah. Vice Chair Davis is okay if I respond?
Please.
Yes, you're always welcome to contact me or Jeff, and you know, sometimes if it's a a topic. That is related to a certain staff member, they may. But yes, you're always welcome to reach out to us. For example, I I I can tell you, like, the student data privacy revisions bill that you see there right in front of you from Senator Andre. He, as you know, was a champion of the Student Data Privacy Program at USBE. And he has always, every year, he opens a bill file just in case there needs to be revisions related to student data privacy. So I remember last year, he had opened a bill file, and I think ended up closing it. He didn't end up using it. So. As far as I know, what I know of Senator Andre, for example, is that he's opened that just in case there's there's something that might come up. And he's very good about asking our staff, working with, you know, the data, the Student Data Privacy Policy Advisory Group, which I believe you're still a member of, or Member Lear. To talk through what might be something used to be in that bill. There are some others here that I have some guesses as to what they are about, and then others that I really don't know. But I'm happy to answer questions about what I know, and then also reach out if if needed, or see what I can find out from the legislators. They're usually. Especially when they have bill files that are public like this, they're generally very open to sharing what what they plan to do with their bill files.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands. And so I thank you both, Deputy Deputy Superintendent Stallings and Director Van Holton. And we'll go ahead and move into the last portion of our study session now. And thank you also to our finance team. I I don't know if I thanked you. Earlier. So let's go ahead and move into the next portion of our meeting, and we will be discussing a proposed resolution and. We'll turn the time over to Board Member Scott Hanson to introduce that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Davis. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, this. Resolution, I hope that everyone's had a chance to look at it. Is something that. I'm proposing in conjunction and consultation with several other board members. And the feeling is that it's important for us as the Utah State Board of Education. With the responsibility for the welfare of our schoolchildren and education setting. To make a statement about decisions on preventative health measures in school. That would include face coverings, social distancing, cleaning protocols. All the things that we experienced and implemented last year. And so this draft has been prepared for everyone's review and discussion. And I would urge the board to come together to make a statement. Of what we feel is the best decision-making process that should be used for our. Health, preventative health measures in schools. Basically, if you get down to the. The end of this. To the now let it be resolved. You can see that we're urging that local health departments and LEAs. Are responsible for making those decisions. In the best interest of our kids. So that's that's my intro. Be happy to entertain any questions that were others involved. I mean, the discussions and the drafting of this. But I'll turn it back to you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Bellknap.
And I know there's not a motion on the table as yet, but I would maybe like to propose a an alternative draft. Of this, it's it's not so much that. We didn't have to have it before. Angie, is there any way that you could have Jeff pull that up? I'd just like to talk a little bit about this and 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 see if, you know, the the maker of this. This resolution would be willing to look at some of this. I think it might be important for us to look at not just in a pandemic. Or in COVID nineteen setting. And then someone will have to help me who is smarter than me in the legal world. That a whereas statement has to be truth. It can't have any vacillation if you can help me with that. So I have I have actually, Angie, do you want, I mean, Jeff, do you want to scroll down just a little bit? I have. Taken out some of these statements, but if you'll notice, most of them are dealing with maybe COVID nineteen and so on and so forth. But Jeff, will you go back up again? One of the, one of the, oh, keep going down. Sorry, Jeff.
Angie is the driver.
Oh, Angie's driving?
Yes.
Hope is described. I'm trying to find where that is. Oh, the 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 third whereas, I do have an alternate. Statement there for the learning. Angie, did you get that from me or not?
I apologize if you sent it to.
Okay, no, you could you could have it. I think. It's the second one down where it says in-person learning is critical. I would like to tweak that to say education is critical to the success and well-being of our students. Education is critical to the success and well-being of our students. Maybe of maybe students instead of our students, Angie, sorry. I'm maybe still wordsmithing and then take out the other part. So I don't know if anyone would like to talk about some of these things I have eliminated.
May I ask Vice Chair just a question?
Yes, please.
So Lori, if you can help me understand. Why we want to broaden this and not deal with the situation that's at hand, which is what those whereas statements that have been stricken are. Really addressing. I mean, here's where we are in the middle of another COVID crisis. And that was really the impetus for the resolution that was drafted. Why? Why would we want to broaden it or not address those?
Vice Chair? How do you answer that? Can I? Are are you, did you just put a motion on the floor?
I I haven't. I I just, I I just am putting an alternative. Resolution on the floor because there wasn't a motion on the floor anyway. Unless you want me to put this one forward, Vice Chair.
I I don't, I don't care either way, but I just think we probably need to get a motion on the floor before we start talking back and forth about whatever it is that we're going to do.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that that we. Move draft. Two forward of this resolution.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to move draft two of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh two. Forward. Is that how I would state that, Angie?
Yeah, give me a second.
Deputy Superintendent Stallings, can you help us out? You're muted.
Sorry about that. I was just going to pull up the motion really quickly to make sure, and then you would just add draft two. So can, and I don't know, can you, you probably can't.
I can see the motion.
Let me get to it. I'm just switching. So do you see that now?
Yes, so there's the motion, there's a motion on the floor that the board approves Board Resolution Number twenty twenty-one oh two. Resolution on preventative health measures in schools, draft two.
And.
We need a second.
Ask for a point of order.
Okay, please.
Where the the action that was on the agenda. Was to adopt draft one. I know a motion hasn't been made, but feels a little bit like this is getting hijacked, where there should be a motion to adopt draft one and then an amendment to that motion. If that's not the case, I'll certainly go with whatever procedure says.
I don't care if that's the motion to adopt draft one. Do you want to amend, Board Member Bellknap, or if there's? Who wants to make a motion can make a motion. Chair Huntsman, do you have something to say about the procedural? Aspect of this?
Yes, welcome to. Parliamentary procedures, the the if. If you were to cite the agenda item. I'm trying to go to it right now. If I can get my mouth sore here again. Come on, wake up, mouth. Can? Can you? As I'm not getting it to work. Oh, now it is. The. Item that's on the. Agenda says action for a board resolution on COVID mitigation. Doesn't say a draft one, doesn't say a draft two, but there is a draft one in the backup, but. You is that's chairing it, Vice Chair Davis, you can accept a motion. You can take a motion, you can accept a motion, but it's not a motion until you get a second. And the only motion that's relevant is a motion that you, as a chair, state. And so until you. State what's before the body. So far, there isn't a a motion.
Okay, so I did state Board Vice Chair Bellknap's motion, but I'm going to ask.
Well, was there a second? Because it can't.
No. There wasn't a second.
Once, once there's a second, then you, whatever motion you state after a second. Is what's on the table.
Okay, nobody's second for a second. Vice Chair Bellknap, do you?
I second. This is Board Member Earl. I second.
Oh. Didn't call on you, Board Member Earl. Board Member Bellknap, do you want to withdraw your motion? And if you want to speak to an amendment to the other and allow Board Member Hanson to move his motion forward? If you if you want to keep your motion on the table, I can ask for a second.
I really don't want to hijack his work and his hard work on this. Chair, would it be okay if I answered his question? Oh, but we are still in the middle of a motion on the table without a second.
Yeah, we are in a motion. We we do have something on the table without a second.
We actually don't have a motion yet because you haven't reread it, and we don't have a second. So.
You made one. We we don't have a second. Board Member Earl was next in line. She will likely second if I call on her, and she's next. So what do you want to do?
I think if we do parliamentary procedure, we probably should go with this, and then if it doesn't pass, then we go back to to draft one.
Okay. Okay, Board Member Earl?
I'll second this motion.
Okay. Motion on the floor that the board approves Board Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash oh two. Resolution on preventative health measures in schools, draft two. Now, do you want to speak to your motion, Board Member?
I do, and I I think that this will help answer the question as well. One of the reasons to have a resolution is so that it can be referred back to. And I think in this case, referring back to this, it's not just about a pandemic. It's about who should be in charge of health of children. Who we have general supervision over, and I think eliminating some of those pieces that related to COVID nineteen. This could relate any time in the future as well with health issues that may arise.
Thank you. Board Member Earl, did you have additional comments beyond the second?
No, I'm seconding this for dialogue, but I'm not sure why we're doing this in the first place, to be honest with you. But I I would, I'm just anxious to get some dialogue about why we're doing this when this already exists. And is already the law and already the direction we're headed. So I'm a little confused by the by the intent. So maybe as we move forward, if someone could address that.
Okay. Thank you. Board Member Lear.
Thank you. I'm I'm concerned about this substitution in a couple of different ways. First of all. The other resolution's been posted for days, if not a week. And we had exactly thirty seconds to look at this. We can't even see the whole thing. It's still not. All posted. And so that troubles me as a procedural issue. I feel like hijacking is something we sometimes expect. From. Other from from other bodies, but I've not really experienced this with board members, and that troubles me, and despite. Member Bellknap's best intentions and stated desire not to do this, this is what it is. And thirdly, I think that the issue is COVID, and those whereas statements are accurate. I reread them quickly. But they are they are fact. They can be supported with with data and and. Continuing statistics and information. There's just another article in the. Select Committee today and yesterday. So those are facts. I think this is the urgency before us. And I think the other, finally, that the the second, the second version is. Not as I I would have to agree with Member Earl, it's not worth doing. It's just vanilla. It's, we support the health of children. It's not. Pushing us in a strong position to support our health. Department officials and experts, which is what the resolved is. Member Earl, you may want to look at that, which is a little different than exactly where we are right now.
Thank you. Board Member Straight?
Yes. Board Member Lear basically said what I was going to say, but. I I I want to reemphasize. From my perspective, the whereas is. Exactly where we want to be, but that's not the the active part of it, and that that is be it resolved. For me. This really just kind of the substitution. Really fills. Not. Not in goodwill, anyway. I know those maybe are too strong words, but that's the words that came to my to my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Moss?
Let me make sure I take my hand.
Um, just let me make sure I take my hand down so I don't forget after. Um, just, just to come, I'm, I'm interested to hear more about the impetus for the resolution. I, my feeling is there are a lot of valuable statements in the wherethes is about our concern and what we've been hearing. I, I worry that some of this is so specifically factual that it wouldn't necessarily apply. Um, I, these, these things are shifting and so, you know, um, it, it just seems to me a little bit specific for a resolution that is intended to describe our concern and our, our, our belief that, that the local county health agencies are in the best position to deal with that concern, working with the LEAs. And I respect that. I just, I wonder if the rest of this might tie us too down, put, put it, put us on the record too closely with specific factual um, descriptions that, that are kind of shifting. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Chair Huntsman?
Um, thank you. I, I, what I had, I guess I have my, my question and concern, I guess there's a motion on the table. So this, so the makers of the motion, I'd like to direct whoever, whether it was this one or two, but right now it's on two. I'm, I'm a little bit confused and can somebody speak to the benefit of this resolution? I'm trying to figure out how this resolution, uh, will make education happen. I'm confused on how we as a, as an entity moving forward, how this resolution will got, help us and guide us, uh, in, um, setting policy um, moving forward. I just, I mean, this is where my, my confusion as a, a, a board member and, and why we already have things, there's already, uh, it's already in statute. The power and authority of a health department and of counties and, uh, those local jurisdictions. So are we saying that we are gonna obey the law? Or are we saying that we are getting in the health business and we're gonna now because of this resolution and the way this concern is put together that we need to maybe get in that and hire multiple? I, I use the term ologists because there's so many different ones out there. Are we getting into the health's business? And so I, I under, I, I just kind of a little bit confused moving forward how this is gonna be guiding and, and, and move us said. I, I recognize the wherethes and, and then also the, where we're at, but we've recognized all of this uh, in the past. That's one concern. The second concern I have, and we could certainly reach out. And so maybe this is a direction, I mean, this will be a good place to go, is the liability side of a, of a statement. So when these lawsuits happen, whether it's mask, not mask, or people are, are suing somebody over, um, a, a health order that now we, because of our resolution or statement and position of maybe endorsement or whatever it might be that now as a government body, we are a pretty good target to be included in those, I believe. But our AGs could weigh in on this, um, in on those, those suits, and then we're partnering up with state dollars, not local county or whatever those other dollars are. And I think setting us up. And so I'm, I've been looking at the liability and then I'm looking at the functionality or where, where is a board when we're done with this? Now, we've, we've had previous resolutions that were guiding documents and, and have helped us. And so I'm, I'm just not seeing it in here. So that is my concern. So that, I guess a question that I'd have to, to you, Chair, is on the litigation, but I've made my statements of concern, but on the litigation side, the way either one of these are crafted, right now we have number two, uh, before us is, does this expose us to litigation? I mean, anyone could sue anybody, but, but does it really put us into the forefront of a lawsuit? Or lawsuits?
Board Member Hanson?
So.
Thank you. Yeah, if you ask about the impetus behind this resolution, um, frankly, we had a system last year that was, uh, turned out to be quite effective in keeping our kids in school, local health departments, working with, um, directly with LEAs and making decisions, uh, with regard to all kinds of preventative health measures. Um, and we were actually lauded on a national scale for being able to keep our kids in, in-person learning. Um, that system is not in effect this year. Uh, we don't have the same preventative health measures happening in schools. Our schools, I don't believe, are following, um, the guidance of the local health departments. And so this, the impetus for this resolution is to say that we support our local LEAs, um, following the guidance of local health departments. And I believe that because we have responsibility for the health, education and safety of our children, um, that we would be not acting, um, in our proper role if we didn't, um, take some sort of a stand on this. Um, we've been bypassed basically in this regard, and I, I feel that it's not proper for us to be silent. So if you look at the wherethes, that is the current state of the COVID crisis in Utah. Um, we had the, uh, director for the state of Utah come in and talk to us. Um, I don't know if you all heard the same report I did, but it was quite dire. Um, we said there were gonna be four times, she said there were gonna be four times as many COVID cases. We have children in the hospital now. We have ICUs that are full. We have children that have, uh, I don't know the exact circumstances, but children who have died, school-aged children in Salt Lake City now. That's the situation we're facing. Um, I'm not okay with the status quo as way that, as far as the way our LEAs are working with the local health departments. And I think that we need to go on record in saying that we feel that this system is not the ideal system for our kids. There's more we can do to protect them. This isn't a blanket mask mandate for the state. This isn't requesting anything like that. This is just saying local health departments should be able to direct the measures that are taken in their locality, and the schools should work directly with them.
So can I, can I have a follow-up? But I still would like to hear from our AGs that when we, if we want to change the expectations out there, if we want to change, as, as you said, Board Member Hanson, um, we would want to put something in policy that has an expect, has an expectation attached to it. And then, of course, when policy's violated, um, then there's something punitive that can, that, that can happen if we're, we're trying to change the course. So I'm, I'm hearing, from what I'm hearing and kind of reading, we're saying, oh, we recognize these authorities. We recognize that the health departments are working with, um, local school boards or LEAs or however that's, that's working out. But then at the same time, we're saying that they're, they're not, and we expect them to. But to what degree? And so I'm, I'm just not, I'm, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused, but I'd like to hear from our AG's chair if we could on
I could.
liability and policy.
Respond briefly to that.
Um, yeah, Board Member Hanson, a brief response and then, um, AAG Quisenberry, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Belnapp, I see your hand and I will circle back to you.
Yeah, I, I am aware of legislation that was passed and I believe, as I said, that we've been cut out of the loop. Basically on that, I don't think that we can create policy that violates current law. And so I believe that the strongest action we can take is to make a resolution saying, this is what we think should be done. This is how we should best protect our kids. Um, and if you look at the, um, resolution, it urges all the decision-makers. Um, if the current legislative framework stays in place, urging local governments to allow this to happen. But, um, that, I'll, I'll let, uh, Ryan talk to us. Thanks.
Thank you, AAG Quisenberry.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Chair Huntsman, for, uh, bringing the, uh, the litigation concern up here. Michelle and I certainly have our, our litigation antenna up, trying to look for, uh, instances where the, the board may be exposed. Obviously, everyone wants to avoid any kind of litigation. Uh, and since Chair, since we last spoke, I had a chance to kind of dig into this a little bit deeper and, and, uh, according with Michelle. The operative paragraph in this draft resolution is the very last one. Everything before that are called recitals and, but the last paragraph, it basically says that the board supports, so that's kind of the key word and the key language, supports measures that local health officials and, um, and, and, and elected officials would take, which is the statutory scheme that legislature passed. So in effect, what we're seeing in this is we support the local folks kind of following the set statutory scheme. It's already been, uh, enacted and it might have that, uh, assuming the board doesn't take any kind of further position or stance or get further involved. Um, other than just saying, we support what they're doing. I would say that the, uh, exposure of the litigation is, is maybe fairly minimal. Um, of course, as you indicated, anyone can sue at any time for any reason. We'd still have to, to kind of deal with potential frivolous lawsuits. But without any more, um, that's kind of our sense of, of where this last provision might take the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Belnapp, the Vice Chair Belnapp.
Thank you. I just, first of all, I want to apologize. I didn't feel, I didn't want to hijack this. I wanted to make it something that maybe that I could vote for. And probably I won't vote for either of these, um, just moving forward. But I thought I at least could consider if there wasn't all about just one disease or one time. I think that this could be broader moving forward. So first of all, I hope you'll accept my apologies, especially, uh, Scott.
Thank you. I'm looking for hands. Um, Board Member Straight?
I agree with the statement that, um, we ought to have something moving forward. But I also absolutely hold on to the idea that we have something very specific right now. And, um, you know, as I, I look at our constitutional mandate, general supervision of, of education. And if I look at why I ran for office and that's the well-being, I mean, that's what we've, all of our discussions are around is creating an educational system for the well-being of, of all our students. Whether that's physical, social, emotional, any of those things. And so I can't think of anything more worthy of my vote than to, uh, protect the health and well-being of students. And saying that, I know that might be considered, uh, I'm not trying to challenge anyone in their morals and their values. But that's just how I feel and I hope that doesn't sound too strong, but that's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Board Member Earl.
Yeah. I, this is currently written. I just don't see that it adds anything anywhere. It just merely states our local entities can make decisions, which we already know our local entities can make decisions. That's what's happening. And if we're dissatisfied with the decisions, we're the ones stepping in. I, I'm, you know, local districts are making those decisions. I don't, I don't feel like that's the role we should be taking. And if we're gonna make a stand like this, we also need to state something like how many kids have actually died of COVID since it started, which those numbers are fairly low. We, I mean, we need to be stating everything and not just, you know, the picking and choosing. And also that parents, similar to the resolution that was written in the spring, need to be making these key decisions. This isn't just about public health officials. It also incorporates families into it too. And without those pieces, um, I think we're missing a big, a big picture here. So I, I still, I'm not still understanding the, the, the reason why this doesn't do anything for schools that isn't already being done and already being acknowledged. Um, we could be dissatisfied or individually dissatisfied with how things are turning out. Maybe in your individual district, you want them to respond differently, but, but that's, that's how they're, um, choosing for whatever reasons. Um, so anyway, those are my thoughts.
I'm looking for additional hands. I'm not seeing any. I, I'm gonna go ahead and, I just speak to this and, um, you know, I, I apologize if I had some parliamentary mistake and should have taken the, the other motion, if there were one. I expected a motion to come with the introduction of the resolution. So, um, you know, I, I see this as more like an amendment rather than a new thing, because all the language is the same, but some are, pieces are taken out. But since it, it is the motion on the floor, I would say that I, I support this, um, resolution as amended. I think it makes a lot of sense. I, I support the operative paragraph. I think that, um, when it comes to making health decisions, we should, um, have those guided by those of medical expertise. I believe that, um, you know, if, if my daughter gets a broken arm, I'm not gonna come to, to one of us or a policymaker to set it or see if it's actually broken. I'm gonna go to someone with medical expertise to see if it needs to be set and how to do it. So I really, um, agree with the operative paragraph. I think that those with, with medical experience should be guiding our schools. And I also don't disagree with the, um, references to COVID, um, as far as the data is concerned. But I think it could, um, and will, um, make this resolution too specific. And that should not come as a surprise to the original resolution drafter. I know I've expressed that, um, a long time ago also. I, I feel like resolutions in general should, um, be general kind of statements. And, um, I think that if there's a breakout of impetigo next year that's communicated in entirely different ways and completely contagious. And, you know, the health department says, look, we gotta break out of impetigo. We need to do A, B, C, and D. Then we, this resolution stands. We should be listening to that advice. Or any other illness that comes along that impacts our students and their ability to stay well and learn and go to school. So, um, that's, that's how I, I feel about it. I apologize with the, all the, the mix of things in the beginning. It wasn't intended as a hijacking by any means. And I, I fully thought that you were going to make a motion, Board Member Hanson, when you introduced your, uh, resolution. So, um, I'm gonna go back to Board Member Hanson as the original drafter of the resolution. So I don't have the final word here and give you an opportunity to speak again if you want it. I know your hand's not up, but I know sometimes board members get frustrated when someone's chairing and they wait till the end of the, um, discussion. Jenny, our conversation reminded me of this. And you feel like they have the final word. So if you want to say something, I'm gonna go back to you.
I appreciate the chance to speak, um, and probably my error in not making a motion right off the bat. I thought that we were introducing and having some discussion before a motion was made. Didn't realize there was draft in the wings. Um, that came as a surprise. It wasn't posted beforehand. Um, so a little bit of a stealth draft, I felt. Um, but, uh, now we're in a difficult parliamentary position. Um, I would be much more comfortable in voting against this draft two and then making amendments to draft one, if that's the way that we want to proceed. But I'm not sure that I can direct that or, or do that right now. If draft two passes, then I assume that draft one is off the table. If draft two doesn't pass, then we can come back to draft one, is the way I see this. Um, to address some of the concerns that have been raised, I, um, agree, and I think I laid out some of the general, um, things that I think should be included in resolutions when we've done this before. They should be enduring and they should be concise. They should be relevant in the future. But this one I see as being a little bit different. We're dealing with an emergency. We have, we've been warned. We had health professionals come into our office and tell us that this situation is dire. And so I'm not really trying to draft a resolution for the ages. I'm trying to deal with the situation we have right now. And we say, yes, there's a process in place. And there is a process in place. The problem is what health professionals are recommending is not being implemented in schools because it's not being supported by some local governments. The purpose of this resolution would be to let those local governments know that we support the health recommendations being adopted in the schools. As the State Board of Education, as people have direct responsibility for the children in our schools and their health and safety. So that is the feeling here. And I, I guess I've got to decide whether to do some sort of all or nothing here. I, I don't like the gutted version of this that's there, but it does have a whereas that is somewhat acceptable. I would prefer to get back to the first draft and then make any amendments that the board sees fit to make to that amendment and not
Member Hanson, I all people feel that this process is fair and your parliamentary opportunity is to amend this draft to put the wherases back in.
I appreciate that. And I, I will make that motion to amend draft two to read as draft one, which was, which was put in the backup for this meeting.
Okay. Second.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to amend draft two of Resolution number 2021-02 to read as draft one in Resolution number 2021-0. Is there a discussion to the motion? Board Member Klein?
No, I had my hand up for, for their comment on something, on the previous discussion.
Okay, Board Member Lear?
And same, mine was to the previous comment, not just to the substitution, which I guess if I'm speaking now anyway, I would say I support the substitute motion, the amendment just made by Chair Hanson.
Member Earl?
You know, the statistics are moving and, and the fact that we don't have the same numbers last year as we did this year speaks to the fact that things are peaking at different times. There were times last year when the peak, we had peak levels and schools did address those as necessary. And so did local health departments. So to say that August is not the same as August last year is true. But August could be the same as November in my community last year where, where COVID peaked. So it's, it's a little misleading as well as even even that some of the statistics around the number of beds available. There's a variety of reasons why some of those aren't available. Primary Children's had a waterline break. I mean, we can go into all this stuff. So I'm really concerned about the data and statistics and other things going on here. I know in, in my community, when the dialogue went on, there was a lot of concern over information that was not always presented accurately. And so this idea that whatever the health professionals put out, that we shouldn't question, we should just move forward on it. I just don't think that's a fair assessment. I think we should be able to ask those questions. And so I would not suggest putting these lines back in. That, that would, I would vote against this amendment.
Thank you. I am looking for hands. Chair Huntsman?
Thank you. And to Board Member Earl's comments about putting everything, the way that I'm reading this, we're saying as a body, we're 100% supportive of what the health departments are saying and how they say it, when they say it, the same health department organization influenced some statewide mandates for every school. And in my voting district, it was masks were required by direction from the same health department where the, inside the county, there wasn't one COVID case. And so I'm not forgetting that. I, I, I highly respect them and their well, I respect their authority to a certain degree, but they didn't have authority to shut all of these rurals, or not shut them down, but mask them up and put all these mandates on them when, when it wasn't there. I remember that happened. I think it was March 16th or 18th of when it first hit. And so I, and I was not as a board member in alignment with, with their decision making. And so I, there's times through the whole pandemic that I have not been, but just to give them according to both of these resolutions, we're saying, hey, whatever you guys decide to do here, we expect you to work with, we expect the LEAs to listen to and work with the, the Health Department and do as they say. And I, and good conscience, I can't, I can't say that because I have not agreed with everything that they have said 100% of the time in the past. So I, I know it's a big bold statement and but that's the reality as I see it as one board member.
Thank you, Board Member Hutchings.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Davis. I just want to say, I, the original draft did trouble me with all the, the wherases. So I was actually happy to see the change. One thing I've noticed in listening to the dialogue that's been going on is it doesn't sound like we have, there's a lot of disagreement about the therefore, let it be resolved about how we think things should be handled in the state of Utah. Locally with the health departments between the decision of the Health Department with the LEA. It feels, it sounds like we pretty much have agreement there. The concern in my view with the wherases that are so specific to the situation is it makes it sounds, sound like we think this is the right way to go if there's a problem. We, I think sometimes if we are, we're challenged by another authority as we have been, that it's okay to restate that yes, these are the principles that we believe should govern when in, in the health and well-being of our students in our schools. And so I think, one, I think it's good to restate that. And two, I think the wherases actually make, makes it a little, little weaker. I think we take out those situational wherases and we leave it as a very strong reiteration of how we should, we see, we believe that our supervision of the schools in pertaining to health situations should be in the state of Utah. And that is in coordination with the local Health Department and the local LEA.
Thank you, Board Member Norton.
Thank you for just bringing that up, Board Member Hutchings. That's what I was going to say as well. You know, I, I agreed with what Vice Chair Davis said about, yes, I would go to an orthopedic before I went to my local principal for a broken arm. The problem comes into this situation is, you know, when we say health professionals, who exactly are we talking about? I know many situations happened in the state where local health departments were working in conjunction with their LEAs, had a great plan, and then it was pulled off the table by state Health Department people. So, you know, the people were not able to choose and, and work together in those areas. And, and so that's, that ambiguity there causes me some concern. Also, I do, you know, I, I left my school last year saying, if I have to wear a mask when I go back next year, I'm not coming back. It was so challenging. And yet, you know, as you saw yesterday and has been as I have had for the last three weeks, I've been wearing a mask. And I've been disinfecting my room and I am vaccinated. I'm doing everything I can to keep my students safe. But there's a big difference there when I'm doing it because it's the right thing to do or when I'm mandated to do it. I know that I can get good health information in my local area and, and, and decide when it's right for me to take my mask off. Whereas when we start putting out resolutions and we start putting out mandates, all of that is taken away. And I don't feel that that's right. I think that you know, we, we are experienced, we are knowledgeable, we know where we can get information from. And, and I, and I don't think we need more government entities making these decisions and making these resolutions. That's, that was just my thoughts on this. And it's probably why I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Looking for additional hands? Scanning and giving plenty of time because I don't want anyone to think anything was hijacked. We can talk about the whole thing together. You can amend to take away. There's one more opportunity even to amend this one. So Natalie Klein?
Yeah, I just will save my piece now. I won't be voting for either of these. I do, I want to take opportunity to agree with Chair Huntsman when I can. I appreciate his comments as well as Kristin's. And we don't need this to do, to do what needs to be done to protect our kids.
Okay. Seeing no other hands, if I am missing you, please speak up in your microphone now. Seeing no other hands, we have an amendment on the table. And Board Member Lear, did you have a comment you want to make? That chat's usually disabled during these sessions. I'm not sure why it's on at this point. Did you have a comment?
Was glad personally that the chat was able and not disabled because I, I think that discussion is sometimes helpful. I, despite the legality or illegality of it, I, I don't have a comment. I, I don't have a comment anymore about the amendments and, and I've spoken twice already. I would just say I'm really disappointed in this process. Not blaming anyone per se. I just had hoped we could have a discussion of the amendment, of the resolution that was pending before us for a week. And not have it complicated, compromised, the discussion compromised by a resolution we saw literally for 30 seconds before we had to do, to figure out what to do procedurally. I expect that in other groups. I usually hope that our board is more cooperative and collaborative. So I'm disappointed in the process. So I'm, I'm voting no on this. I'm voting yes on the resolution I've seen for a week. And no on the one that I can't, hadn't seen, haven't been able to digest. A final thing is I did go back, Chair Davis, or Vice Chair Davis, and to your comment about resolutions are usually general. I read many resolutions from the last two or three or four years from the legislative session. Some were general, some were very specific. I don't think it is a given that resolutions focus on the general or are meant to endure. I think there is a combination of things that our resolutions address. And I agree, this is a dire condition that the board should weigh in on. And we state fact in those facts. And I, there are some people who won't like those facts. And that does not trouble me.
Thank you. Yeah. And just, just to make sure my quote is understood, I never said that they aren't. I said, I believe they should be general and more enduring on basic ideas. The amendment that you're voting on right now is the resolution in its entirety as it was on the board for a week. So I want people to feel that that's fair and that you have ample opportunity to talk about it. That is what's on the table right now. That is what we're talking about. So anyone who wants to discuss it, please raise your hand now. Okay, seeing no hands, we have an amendment on the table that Board Resolution Number 2021-02 Resolution on Preventative Health Measures in School Draft Two reads and is has the language of draft one. Those in favor, please vote. Well, actually, everyone can just vote electronically. We're voting for the amendment to replace the wherases that were removed.
Chair Davis, this is Board Member Cannon. Can you hear me?
Yes. Did you have a question?
I had to switch from the computer. Did, did my vote show up? But that's all I needed.
You know what? I'm going to take a roll call vote. Vice Chair Bownat?
No.
Board Member Booth?
Yes.
Board Member Cannon?
Yes.
Board Member Klein?
No.
Board Member Earl?
No.
Board Member Hanson? Board Member Hanson?
Sorry, yes.
Board Member Hart? Board Member Molly Hart? One more time. Board Member Hart? Board Chairman Chair Huntsman?
No.
Board Member Hutchings?
No.
Board Member Hymus?
No.
Board Member Lear?
Yes.
Board Member Moss?
No.
Board Member Norton?
No.
Board Member Straight?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to circle back to Molly, Board Member Hart, and look for either an electronic or a voice call vote from her. If anyone's looking on that
I don't see her online.
I don't see her on the
She's on here.
Do you see a vote?
I do not.
See if she's trying to text.
I, I can text her and see if she can, see if she's having problems.
Just count really quick and see if that'll make a difference. It will not. Motion fails with Board Member Hart absent. The we have a motion on the floor.
Just wrote, that was, I just got a text from her. She's with an EMT for a student emergency right now. So just FYI.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor to pass that the board approves Board Resolution Number 2021-02 Resolution on Preventative Health Measures in Schools Draft Two. Is there a discussion to the motion?
Could we see that again? Vice Chair, can we have that on the screen?
Can we put that back up on the screen, please?
Just one moment.
Board Member Lear?
Um, I, I will be voting no about, on this mostly because I don't think it is now, there's any urgency to it. If we were going to support such a resolution, I would like some time to look at it, think about it. Consider whether I would want to make some amendments or not. So the way it's written, there's no urgency. I don't disagree with the sentiments, but we ought to have it on the October agenda rather than passing something that we've only seen for, again, literally a minute now. It's been seven, seven thirty seconds. And I, I just don't support that kind of process. I just don't support that kind of process. Sorry to speak so many times.
There, it could be a motion to postpone if that's what. I'm, or remember Lear was wanting to do, but.
Or remember Lear, are you making a motion to postpone?
I am.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to postpone discussion. Um, do we have a second? Uh, board member Straight, your hand is up. Are you a second?
No, I wish to, so do you want me to take it down?
I just am seeing if that, if that's why your hand is up.
No.
It looks like we do not have a second, so we'll continue with the motion with this resolution. Um, board member Earl.
Yeah, I do appreciate the things that were stricken from the original one. I'm still not sure what this even does, though. Um, to be honest with you. I just, I feel like it's just saying. Do what we, do what you're doing, right? Um, so it it just doesn't, it doesn't have any. Um, I just don't, I I won't be voting for it. I just don't feel like we, there's a need for it, um, or a pressing urgency.
Thank you, board member Straight.
So. The whereas is do lay out. The justifications and reasons. But it is not the enabling part of the resolution. It is not what gives it the power. Therefore, be it resolved does. So I'm sort of a dilemma here because. I don't want to miss the opportunity. To to voice. What is in the, therefore let it be resolved. Because I agree with the resolve. And so eliminating some whereas is. You know, I. I guess that just doesn't concern me. Uh, my understanding, there was no changes to the, therefore be it resolved. Is that correct? And I wish to speak.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the acting part. And yeah, uh. My pride might say, well, I'm not going to vote for this. But. I don't want to wait till next month. If it fails, it fails, and we say that we like the system as it is. And uh, there has been changes from last year. That did remove USB from it, and I can absolutely understand. Uh, not wanting to wade into this politically, but for me, it's not a political question. As to uh. Partisanship. And I realize that there's different feelings throughout the state. This allows local control. Last year, there wasn't quite the same local control. Additionally. Health departments have been taken out of the equation. Example in place, what happened in Salt Lake City. The Salt Lake City Council, Salt Lake Council or the, yeah, Salt, the county council of Salt Lake. And uh, the recommendations of the health board. So. Boy, there's, there's a lot going on there. And so. I am going to vote for this, and if it fails, then I put my two cents in, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'm looking for additional hands. Board member Hanson.
Thank you. Um, I'll also speak in favor of the. I guess not amended motion, but this draft two, um, certainly. Not the document that I would prefer to present, but I think it's important that we take a position now. Um, we're in this situation now, a month from now, this won't be nearly as relevant as it is right now. Um, so I'll speak in favor of it and appreciate the comments today.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this motion? Uh, I'll speak to it. I'm going to be voting for this. I agree with the be it resolved. I think it's important for students. I think it's important that. This, it's noted that this um, allows the LEAs in in consultation. Um, with the health department to consult with them, that the health department is helping guide health decisions. It makes. Perfect sense. It's reasonable to me. Um, I think that this resolution we can use. In whatever outbreak outbreaks and that we will remind people that we feel that. Medical expertise is important when making health decisions, and so I will be voting for this. Resolution. Again, I don't have the last word. If someone wants to have the last word, so I'm looking for hands, and if I've missed you, speak into your microphone. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Are you going to put that back up? I've got it right here. We have a motion on the floor that the board approves. Board resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero two resolution on preventative health measures in schools draft.
Chair Huntsman did have his hand up. I don't know if had a comment or not.
I did not see that.
You know, you, you called it out. I think everyone knows where I stood. I, I just was going to make sure you didn't have the last word. Because I think that's what you're speaking, but I I'm fine.
Okay.
Before I stand, so I don't need to say it again.
Thank you. Please, um, I'm going to take a roll call vote. Vice Chair Bellknap.
No.
Um, board member Booth.
Yes.
Board member Cannon.
Did you say Klein?
Cannon, sorry.
My vote is yes.
Board member Klein.
No.
Board member Earl.
No.
Board member Hanson.
Yes.
Board member Hart, are you back? Board mem- uh, Chair Huntsman.
No.
Hutchings.
Yes.
Board member Hymus.
No.
Board member Lear.
No.
Board member Moss.
No.
Board member Norton.
No.
Board member Straight.
Yes.
And I am a yes. And board member Molly Hart is absent, and the motion fails. And that's the end of our study session, I believe, and I'll just say it one more time. Um, I. Apologize if there was any parliamentary, um. It changes or misunderstandings. I fully expected a motion to be made at the beginning of this meeting. Um, and then people could add or subtract or do as they will in in their amendments. Um. So Chair Huntsman, it it look to you to see if we need any final words or if we're good to end.
Well, there's nothing else on the agenda, so with you chairing, then you can conclude the meeting and adjourn it.
Okay.
And I, and it's just following this. There was every opportunity for anything and everything to happen. So I, there's no need to apologize, in my opinion. It. It is what it is when you're chairing and you take what comes as it comes. So. I, I don't, I I think it, I thought you did a good job.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.